Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to staff meeting Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. A few things on the schedule today. Commissioner Mike here has an obligation. He'll be joining us, be assumed. There he is. The rest of the gang is here. Manager Stoltz, take it away.
Two items, and we have a pending fire alarm thing overshadowing this at any time the fire alarm could go off on a practice exercise. And if that happens, I will have to probably take a break out of the wheel to here. So we'll go quickly and efficiently here because apparently when the fire marshal shows up, the practice happens. But two updates today, one from the appraiser. We'll have him go first, Mark, if you want to come on up. Just giving update on the appraisers office operations and some some issues that have come up in the last two weeks. Let Mark talk about that. And if we have time and no fire alarm, then Tanya will give an update on park management and some park regulation changes. So.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hey, good morning, Mark.
Brief you this morning on several issues. And one of them is I can go ahead and tell you that it is a busy hearing season. However, I can tell you that we have fewer hearings this year than we had last year. And last year, we had 4,656 hearings. This year, we have 4,364. And the big difference is the number in commercial. It's over 1,600, and it is very, very busy. Staff is, is they're slugging through it, but it's, it's tough. Also, we came out with a FAQ. And that is regarding rural residential properties, comp sheets, and several other items that PVD has brought to our attention. So I'm going to read this fact sheet to you. I've heard the county appraiser mention USEPAP. What is that? USEPAP is the Uniform Standard of Professional Appraisal Practice. This is developed by the Appraisal Foundation, which is a program administered by the United States Congress to give guidance and standards to the appraisal industry. The Cedric County Appraisers Office is required by statute to follow USEPAP. And as mass appraisers, we follow standards five and six. What is the difference between a fee appraiser and a mass appraiser? A fee appraiser will value one property at a time, usually for bank financing or other financial or judicial purposes. A mass appraiser values a large group of properties of, at one time, using standardized statistical methods and procedures as outlined by state statutes. What is a comparable sales report? A comparable sales report is a list of the five most comparable sales to the subject property that is used to determine the comparable sales value. What is a comparable sales value? And what is it used for? The comparable sales value is the value of the subject property by comparing it to recently sold properties and is one of the valuation methods used to determine the fair market value of the subject property. What reports are typically ran for rural residential properties? The Cedric County has, Cedric County has historically valued rural residential properties with a cost approach.
Mark, let's take a five-minute break and listen to the fire alarm. Okay, fire drill is over. Back to Mark Clark.
Thank you. What reports are typically ran for rural residential properties? Cedric County has historically valued rural residential properties with a cost approach. The cost detail report is available on the website. This year, the county did not run comparable sales reports on rural residential properties at the time of notices because typically when property owners have prepared for appeals in past years, they would present their case based upon comparable sales when they were valued on cost. This created great agitation. The county appraisers office was also trying to bring more uniformity to neighboring properties by treating farm home sites and rural residential properties similarly. What is the cost approach? It is considered the most reliable approach to valuing unique properties like rural residential. It is a value that is the sum of the land and all improvements on a parcel. The improvement value is depreciated to consider for physical condition and other external and functional obsolescence. Has the county since ran comparable sales reports for rural residential properties? With guidance from the State Division of Property Valuation, comparable sales reports for all rural residential properties are now available on the Cedric County website, on the Cedric County Appraisers website at cedriccounty.org/appraiser and search property appraisals. What do the comparable comparability points in a comparable sales report represent? The comparability points in the comparable sales report indicate the variation between the subject parcel and selected comparable sales that are used to determine the comparable sales value for the subject property. A score of 50 points or less is considered by the Cedric County Appraisers Office to be a great comparable. 50 to 100 points is considered a good comparable, and a score over 100 is a bad comparable. The reason a score over 100 points is considered a bad comparable is because there would be too many adjustments to make logical appraisal sense. If I don't agree with my value, what are my options? You always have the right to protest your appraised value. The deadline for an informal equalization appeal by statute is April 1. For the 2024 tax year, the deadline has passed. The next opportunity to file an appeal for tax year 2024 is the first half tax payment in December. This would be the first tax payment for the current tax year. You can only appeal, you can only file one appeal per year. If you have already filed an informal equalization appeal and do not think your appraised value is correct, you have 30 days from the date on the result letter to file with the State Board of Tax Appeals. I also have several important key dates there coming up. Be May 1 statutory date for filing your personal property. CVN, that's we're mailing those. May 10th, you pay your second half tax bill. That's for 2023 taxes. May 15th statutory deadline to file your personal property informal equalization appeal. That's also the last day that we can conduct real property informal meetings. And May 20th, that's the date that we have to get all our result letters postmarked in the mail to property owners. And of course, June 1, that is when we certify the role to the county clerk. I would also add that also, just to clarify. Historically, my office generated comp sheets on rural residential properties. For tax year 2024, comp sheets were not generated at the time of noticing, but have since been ran and are located on the appraisers website. The appraisers office, through the process of reconciliation, has historically, has historically selected the cost approach as the value method for all rural residential properties. Over the last several years, rural residential property owners prepared for their appeals by using comp sheets for their respective properties, which caused many of those property owners to get angry and feel that my office was misleading. Therefore, I did make the decision to run, to not run and publish the comp sheet for 2024 to avoid the appearance of being misleading and circumventing the potential for needlessly irritating property owners. The comparable sales approach was not chosen as the valuation method because the comps are so dissimilar due to location, size, and age. These properties are not homogeneous in nature. A few residential, a few rural residential communities exist where properties are more homogeneous, and the sales comparable approach can work a little better. But given the current market conditions, there are usually not enough sales in an area to produce good comp sheets. Since there have been significant value increases in recent years, I believe it is important that the appraisers office continue to analyze market, current market conditions. And for, for tax year 2025, my office will also review all residential models and print comp sheets on all residential property types. Another issue that irritates property owners and PVD is the lack of information on all property types on our webpage. My office is starting to work with Cedric County IT to revise and enhance the information available to the public for residential, agricultural, and commercial properties. We have been told that smaller counties have more appraisal information available on their websites than ours does. These changes will be visible on the Appraisers Office webpage by March 1st, 2025, and I will continue to keep you updated as progress is made on the website. Any questions?
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? Mr. Herr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question. So is this a local decision to do this, or is this to not use these comparable sales data for the rural property stuff?
That is a local decision.
Okay. We're not going to do this next year. Is that right? We don't, we do not intend to do this again next year?
No, because when we look at the, at the data and we see how values have increased, it looks like it's important that we need to go back and look at all of the models, including rural residential. And then, yeah, I believe it is possible that we may find some, some things occurring. Right now, we're not sure. We're looking for trends. We're not seeing those trends. However, this is a big year, and we may very well see something that pops out at us. So, no, I think that we will do, and we have already told PVD, we will print the comp sheets going forward.
And so is this the, the, those properties inside of a city are treated normally with comparable sales, but every property in Cedric County that's not inside of a city was treated this other method, cost, the cost approach or whatever?
Yes.
So some of those neighborhoods, some of the, there's, there are some neighborhood-like areas in the unincorporated that I would argue that there may be some comparable sales because it's a several, several blocks of houses that are kind of together.
Okay.
Is, but even in that case, we did not, we did not.
I would say no, because when we looked at those and, and staff did, I think, a very thorough analysis. We didn't see where those comp sheets were, were providing the information they should. Those comparability points were all way above 100.
Okay.
And so this was different, right? This isn't something that we've done every year to now?
It was different. We have thought about this some, about doing this because it is, it tends to be explosive with these property owners when they think they're going to be valued on comparable sales, and you have the comparable show sheet out there. They prepared for their appeal. And then, when the appraiser begins the appeal, it's going over the characteristics and everything and tells them they're valued on the cost approach. Boom. I prepared my appeal on a sales comparable approach and my, 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 trying to get you to change my value. And it is just, it's nasty.
I understand that. Do we, did we publicly, or did your office publicly say anything about that before? We just didn't send those, or we didn't use that method this time? Did, did the homeowners know that they were going to not have that this year, even though they've had that?
I would say no. However, we, we, we thought that was the best way to handle that because they already thought we were misleading. And the other issue, we did not want to be misleading. And the reason why I bring up the word misleading is because that is a violation of USEPAP. And in my explanation to PVD, I pointed that out, and there is no violation.
Mark, on rural residential properties, is it, is it safe to assume that the sales approach would provide for higher valuations than the cost approach based on comparable sales data? I mean, I, buying properties in rural residential areas, depending on particularly areas that I live in, they're going for significantly higher valuations and.
They are. And what, what people don't seem to understand is that in years past, and when you're looking at, at the sales and you're looking at cost, cost has tended to be lower.
In many respects, I think it'd be significantly lower based on the prospect of what future valuations will bring for future developers buying rural residential properties.
It can.
Okay.
And so, once again, we didn't want to be misleading. But, you know, when when we say we're, we're using the cost approach, it isn't like we're, we're like we're stiff-arming these people. It's, it has generally been a lower value.
More favorable.
Yes.
So Chairman, thank you for that. So on that, on that point he just made, if we go back to a sales comparable approach next year, and they get corrected, if you will, to a fair market rate, they're going to see a higher increase because they may have had arbitrarily lower value this year.
That is correct.
That's going to create more conflict next year.
That is true.
You know, the Constitution requires us to do things uniformly and equally. The fact that we are treating these residential properties differently, I understand the reason why you did it. I get that. But when we arbitrarily say these ones are going to do cost approach, these ones are going to do comparable sales, that doesn't seem, seem to me to fit the definition of uniform and equal.
Well, in our discussions with PVD, we did point out that sitting side by side, you can have farm home sites and you can have rural residential. That being the case, I mean, there is a disparity now that we're trying to clean up that has been there for a number of years. And so we are trying to be more uniform and equal. I understand your point. That is a point that could be argued, but I don't think it'd be a point that you would win.
I guess I would, I would say, if we have the authority, the latitude to make these types of decisions, I guess I'd like to be part of that. I wish I would, we would have been in this discussion earlier in the process. I'm not so sure that this has been good for the, for the entire process. I think this is a, it requires an explanation. There's a lot of upset people out there that don't understand what's going on, and I, I understand their side. I get that. This kind of reminds me of the, the outbuilding discussion we had when I first became a commissioner. We had depreciated outbuildings, I think, over 25 years, and suddenly we extended that to like 50 years, which means the value that had been depreciated, suddenly, suddenly that outgoing increased in value.
Yes.
And that was a local decision. It wasn't directed by, by any law or PVD or anybody. It was simply a decision was made within the appraisers office. But it created a tremendous amount of upset people out there.
I, I understand. I remember vividly the sitting in the county appraisers office when, when the phone call came. Your phone call, PVD's phone call, et cetera, et cetera. When you say that there was no justification for doing that in the outbuildings, I would say there was, but I would say it was handled appropriately. And one of the things that we do is calculate depreciation. And that had changed. What we didn't do is tell people that that had occurred. And in that respect.
Well, this is kind of like that. I mean, I'd be, this is, it's another, it's a similar story because things are, things were handled differently for some reason. I'm sure there was justification for it, but especially when we're, we're going in this direction for one year and then going back next year. To me, it seems like this is a kind of a futile. This, this year's not special. We've had several years where we've had high valuation, you know, on average, valuations have gone up. Next year, I don't know. It's going to be much different. So until we see it, we really won't know. But at the end of the day, to do this for one year, to me, to me seems almost like a futile point. I don't see the value of doing this because I think it's going to create more conflict next year. Next time this comes up again, we're going to see the opposite. People are going to say, why did my value go up so much? Well, we put you back on to a cost or to a back to a sales, a sales comparable approach. And next thing you know, they're going to be mad about that. So I don't, I don't know why we're flipping back and forth.
But understand, just because we're going to run comp sheets next year does not mean necessarily we're going to select in the process of reconciliation, the sales approach. We may very well stick with the cost approach. It all depends on, you know, we're looking at the values, what's going on, that appraiser is going to make a selection. And so I can't tell you, stand here and tell you that just because we, we put the sales comps out there, that is what's going to be chosen.
All right. Oh, go ahead. Yes.
And thank you. Because we did this last year, and we're going back to this next year. What about the individuals who wanted to see their comp sheets this year?
They're out there.
Appealed or did not appeal. Have we, are we sending those out? Are we being? Are we, I understand your reasoning and why. I get it. But it wasn't communicated. And at the end of the day, if it's not communicated and people don't know what, what they expect they're not getting, it's causing issues. And so what are we doing to be now proactive to go back and, and make this right with those individuals? Or are we doing anything? Because I feel like we should be.
PVD said that we could put stuff out on the website, and that would satisfy. And so that's what we.
I get that PVD is saying that, but I'm saying as a commission, at least as a commissioner, I would like to see us do something more than that. I mean, I get not everybody is going to be tech savvy that's going to get online and try to look through. If you've gone to our website, it's not the easiest to navigate. What can we do to do better by those people who wanted to see comp sheets sent in? And I just think that there's something else that we could be doing, sending something out to their homes even more than just putting something on a website. And I get that PVD is saying that's okay. But is that really what's best for the residents that live in Cedric County? Could we do better? I think we probably could.
We'll have to put our heads together and see how we can best do that.
To be clear, PVD is requiring a sales approach, sales comp approach next year for rural residential. That's, are they requiring that? Is that what?
They suggested that is the best thing to do.
Strong suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. That's helpful. This is helpful. Thank you, Mark. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
We're going to talk about parks now. We're shifting gear here. There's a lot of changes from facilities perspective. And so just for some kind of how we manage, especially Afton, and a little bit about Cedric County Park. I want to tell you this to kind of give you a real high overview of what we're moving toward with park management. So.
Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. So recently, parks moved over to admin services. And so Tim was working with Aaron on updates to parks codes or park rules. And so I kind of took that over and with respect to Tim, kept some of the stuff that he had in there. But on some of the parks codes or the rules, I took it a little bit of a step further. And there's kind of a philosophy here, I think, that we want to adopt at Cedric County Park and Lake Afton. And so some of that philosophy is trying to make sure that we maintain a a appearance in respect to the natural resources that we have out there at the parks. And so some of, and I'll go through the parks codes kind of at a some high summary level. And then if you want to get into the weeds, we can certainly do that. But what we're finding out at the park is that there is, there are some folks that respect the park and its natural resources, and then there are some that do not. And so one of the, one of the rules that we want to change is basically littering because what we're finding is that folks are bringing trash to the parks that maybe is not generated at the park. So we're finding like mattresses at the, at the trash bin. We're finding some folks that are wanting to remodel their campers and just placing the trash there. And then we are finding people that just want to take their additional trash to the, to the parks and just dump their trash there. So we're asking for some additional rules for dumping and littering at the trash site there. Some of the other rules that we want to change to the codes is basically just a different philosophy of camping at Lake Afton Park. Before, we used to have basically a 300-day calendar rule there at the park where you could stay up to 300 days. We want to kind of change that philosophy a little bit to where we're reducing that for the enjoyment of, you know, of a family and make that a resource more of a local park and not necessarily a place to live. And so let me just kind of go through some of the park changes at a high level. Like I said, I'm, I'm happy to kind of then delve in to a deeper dive then. So I mentioned the littering. The camping, what we've changed there is a total of 14 days. So you can camp for 14 days. You would then have to leave the park for five days. And then in total for a calendar year, you would be able to camp there for 90 days total. So that's, that's of course open for discussion. Again, what we had before there was a total of 300 days that you could camp at Lake Afton Park.
Do you want questions as we go through?
Absolutely. Yeah.
I appreciate the fact that you reduced it to 300. It was absolutely excessive. My question is, even on the 90 days, 90 days is a little over six days. So it ought to be something divisible by 14. So you got a certain number of times that you can stay. Well, I don't know. I would look at something like 56 days, which is four total days during a period. And that is the guys divisible by 14. So I just don't know how you picked the 90.
Okay. So I'll move on from there and appreciate your input on that, Commissioner. If a camp is left undetected for over 24 hours, and that's not coordinated with the park superintendent, then that is considered, your camp is considered undetected at that point. And then the property will be removed and stored by parks for 30 days. And after that, that property becomes ownership of the county and then will be disposed of. And so that, that is a change. We are limiting the number of camping vehicles and trailers to one. And so that's, that's an update. Also, you cannot camp closer than 30 feet from a public shelter. That's an update. As far as tarps, if you are, if you are renting a shelter, you can have one side of the shelter. You can tarp that one side during inclement weather, or a tarp can be used. Or a tarp can be used to make a tent for an overnight shelter. You can also use a tarp either entering or exiting the park or to cover an open trailer while at the park. So just as an example there, we don't want a tarp used to basically cover, if you're using an open shelter, we don't want a tarp used there to cover all sides of your, of your shelter, for example. And then we have updated the fees to basically address increases in operating costs and then just to become competitive with area lakes. And I'm happy to go through. For example, shelter fees, we, we increased that by ten percent. The permit fees, we increased by forty percent. Camping fees, we increased by fifteen percent. And then as we, as we go through and you can see the updates to the fees, for example, the, the daily fee for trailers, we moved up from a dollar to three dollars. The daily fee for outdoor lighting changes from fifty cents to two dollars. Daily late payment for fee for campers with expired camping permits changes from five dollars to seven fifty. So in there, we've kind of inserted some percentages and then in there, we've kind of, you know, changed kind of the dollar figure.
You know, when was the last time we did a pricing update for these fees?
I had a feeling that was going to be asked and I forgot to ask that. Tim, do you know when the last time that was? So that, I mean, I just kind of picked out at a high level what the main purpose of the changes to the parking rules were. And I've left you, you know, what those changes are with the red line. But that overall is what we're looking for. It's just that philosophy change. And most of it is for, for Lake Afton Park. One thing I do want to talk about is the possibility of us looking at closing Lake Afton Park for a week. And it's coming up if we, if we can pull this off, May twelfth through the eighteenth. This will require your authority and approval to be able to do that. But for us to be able to, to do that, what that allows us to do is just basically go in there, clean up the park, do some maintenance items. And we will, of course, not give permits to those folks that want to camp during that, during that timeframe. But again, that allows us just to be able to go in and clean up the park. So that's all I had for you. And then I will mention one more thing that that will be coming up in C I P discussion. Or no, excuse me, in our budget pairing discussion is I have, through Aaron, we have requested fifty thousand dollars for a master plan for Cedric County Park and Lake Afton Park for consideration of what can be done as far as amenities, infrastructure and for the park site at Lake Afton Park.
Okay. Any questions? And Aaron Bailey is here. He's sitting back here. If we have any questions, particularly for our park superintendent, the commissioner did ask.
Thank you, Chairman. One other question I've got, as I went through this, I just made a couple of notes. But you've got a, a Lake Afton and also for Cedric County Park. It's in two different locations. Now, you've got a large event fee schedule for both of those. And it doesn't really define what the large event fee large events are. For example, Dam Jam, that comes to mind. If you follow the schedule a year ago, Dam Jam would have only paid seven hundred and fifty dollars. So I think you need more definition in here that for certain events, the seven hundred and fifty isn't going to cover because we've got to provide safety, security, a lot of other things on some of these large events. And to have it documented that that's all we're going to charge, then I I'd come back if I was going to put on an event for seven, five thousand people, I'd say I owe you seven hundred and fifty dollars. So I can understand that for some of the events. But other events, I think, need more definition that specifies that certain events may go beyond this schedule.
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Dennis. One thing that the manager asked us to do was specifically look at Lake Afton Park and the events. And so one thing that we were trying to address very quickly was the rules and the code changes that you see here. I think what we want to do is, to your point, the Dam Jam is specifically look at events and our rules for an event such as Dam Jam. And so I think that will come following this particular code change. And we did bring that up to our mod, and so we are going to work on that as well.
I think we need to adjust it before we vote on something like this. Because in both places, I think there's things that could happen at Cedric County Park. Also, you got the vetting for the Cedric County Park that I don't know that I agree with charging a maximum of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
To your point, Commissioner, I think what we do is we maybe just pull out large events out of that policy. You have a separate policy for large events that goes into those specifics. We'll just take it out of that policy and make it actually a.
I don't know if you need to take it out or you just need to define that this is the, is the starting point. But depending on what the event is and what kind of services the county has to provide, then it may cost much more than seven hundred and fifty dollars, for example, for five thousand people.
We'll fix it.
If you don't mind, if I follow up a question on that, how many events at Lake Afton do they do with outside of it? And Dam Jam's not a thing like after anymore, but three thousand plus people, how many events does Lake Afton have that does something like that?
Good morning. You're Bailey Park Superintendent. I do not have the list in front of me. I don't think we have very many that reach that level of attendance, but there are dozens of events coming up. This coming weekend is the go-kart races. That's very popular out there at Lake Afton as well. And there'll, there'll be hundreds there, but we're not.
The car show you got coming up in the summertime will have thousands of people there and probably close to a thousand cars there, but you do have that specified at two hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know to take a hold of there if you have charged them thousands of dollars for that type of event. But you did break that one out.
Okay. That's helpful. You know, I just, there's always two factors you look at is number of people and then is there going to be alcohol? And on the car show, for example, that's a lot of people, but there's not a lot of wear and tear. There's not a security concern. Generally, there's no alcohol unless you're sneaking it in, Commissioner. But I, this, those are, that's why this policy probably needs to just a lot of variety out there. But one thing that we need to catch up with other cities and counties is we have to have a regulatory policy on large events. The sheriff needs to be involved. EMS chief need to be involved, even before it gets to commission. Those hands need to touch that so that when it comes for you, you, you know, everything's covered.
Other questions for?
I just want to thank Tanya and everyone that worked on this. Because probably beyond the Appraisers' Office and taxes, the second most common complaint that I get on my email is something about parks. So I appreciate the work.
Yeah, very good. Tom, anything else? Hey, anything else we need to discuss? Okay, I think we're good. We had a fire drill and all and we.
Yep.
We endured, so. We all, thanks, guys. Appreciate you.